Richard Russo is from Syracuse.
Yeah.
Well, maybe we can, maybe we can just talk forever on this National Day of Prayer.
I've got 45 minutes in me.
Johnny, by the thirty, whenever you're ready.
All right, call to order Administrative Efficiency. The only item on the agenda is the ceremonial resolution for National Day of Prayer. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? Have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Who's on it?
That's okay.
See, it was me. I'll second it.
How about us in favor?
Aye.
Anything else that come before Administrative Efficiency?
Motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Second.
I second.
How about us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is a long agenda, so. Um, okay, I'm going to call to order government operations in this year, so. Oh, are you? Okay, very good. We first have a land, a presentation from our land bank. Have David Hobie-Camp here. Please get back to class.
Hi all, thank you.
Karen.
Land Bank Chair, so.
Richard Russo is on his way, so I'll start to make a very busy agenda. I want to give you a brief overview of what we accomplished over the past year and a little teaser for what's to come. So we really appreciate your time. And as I said, I'm pretty sure Richard will be here in a moment. Just to give everyone a reminder, refresher of what the Calveridge Land Bank is. The mission is to strengthen neighborhoods and building light in the city of Schenectady, Schenectady County, and in the city of Amsterdam. It's a nice way first to develop regional cooperation with Amsterdam. So I just want to give you an overview of, you know, the land bank started in 2012. Really over the past three years has been the majority of our activity. In 2014, we were the recipient of a technical assistance grant from New York State Attorney General's office. They use a lot of their bank settlement funds to fund a community revitalization initiative, which is basically land bank, land bank funding. 2015, 2016, we ever secured $3 million. I'll talk a little bit about the activity that we've done with that. And big news for us moving forward is that we received the third largest grant from New York State Land Bank, $1.7 million. Again, using some more of that settlement funding. And we also were awarded for Schenectady Neighborhoods, a program called Neighbors for Neighborhoods. It's $450,000, working with people local who want to get into the rental market. Their money's tailored for people who have fewer than two rentals. This is a program that's, you know, through the state, we didn't make the rules to the program. But for people with fewer than two rentals who might want to take the opportunity, take that light at home, that city-owned property that is having a hard time finding a reuse for, renovate it with grant funds from this program. The first home that we're working on is on Green Street, which was a four-unit building. Part of it was city-owned and was helping us secure, getting that back and make it a strong entryway to the stockade. Just another support that we've received over the past three years is support for our Tribute Park project, which is up on Eastern Avenue. We received support from the Carillion Foundation, Wright Family Foundation, Schenectady Foundation. Richard Russo is able to make it, so just.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, David. So it looks like we already got started?
Yep.
So, pardon me. Some of the accomplishments that we've had, for everyone who doesn't know me, I'm Richard Russo, District One County Legislature, and I'm chairman of the land bank. Apologies for my tardiness. We've had over 100 demolitions in the city in the last two and a half years in partnership with the city of Schenectady. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We've worked very hard to continue the momentum that was started back in 2015. Eastern Avenue was a big part of our corridor focus, and we've had over 25 demolitions there. We've had the designation of St. Mary's Campus as a historic center, and we've done a number of housing and business rehabilitations. Phase one of Tribute Park, really big part of our strategy on Eastern, on the Eastern Parkway or Eastern Avenue Corridor. First pocket park in over 20 years. That's a big deal for us. I'm especially proud of what Florida's done and the land bank has done in general, respect to putting another park in the city of Schenectady. Our Splash Pod, Splash Pad, which is a big piece of what we're doing there, is expected to end this summer. Forty-seven Knott Street, that's the former DSS Knott Street High School, one of the oldest buildings in the city. Historic preservation grants are part of what we're doing here. And that's 15 units that the land bank is going to help revitalize and restore in that building. And another 23 properties have been restored to taxable status and productive use in the city. So a lot of accomplishments in the 2014, 15, and 16 years. Some graphics of what we've been doing on Eastern Avenue. Habitat for Humanity, a huge partner in our community. We're very supportive of what they do. They've got their own mission, but the land bank sees a lot of congruity there. Couple of properties were done on Terry Street, again, with the help from the city. You know, that partnership where the city is going into foreclosure status, we take ownership of the premise Habitat. We've worked with Habitat on some of those projects, and that's just a really good project partnership. Historic preservation, again, we're talking about St. Mary's. The rectory, that was, there was a number of inhabitants in there, none of which were human. They were winged and squirreled and all kinds of things. We've had some partners go in there and clean it up. And the owner of St. Mary's is looking at, you know, that whole campus as a revitalized property. So it's very exciting. That's the old school that she's working hard, Land Bank, Metroplex, number of partners in there are trying to figure out how to restore that to productive use. Tribute Park, again, can't tell you how much, you know, for me, serving in public, public service is about, you know, giving back what we can do for the community. And that's a stamp of effort that the land bank, city of Schenectady, and as individuals, we all can say that we worked hard to get a new park, a pocket park, in the city of Schenectady. That's up on Eastern Avenue. We're very excited about where we stand with that now and moving forward.
And just a quick plug, because I was looking for more donations for phase two. The small paper area right towards the entrance in the bottom right-hand corner, we have on our website page, if people would like to donate, they've written on papers, just to help us along with phase two, make sure to get that splash pad developed.
That park wouldn't have happened without three other critical members in our community, the Wright Family Foundation, the Carillion, and the Schenectady Foundation. Tremendous benefactors in our community that have helped in a number of projects, and that's not, and that's, that's an important one. Additional projects that we have going on, Two Families, this is the first property on the left-hand side as you go up Eastern Ave.
That's 839 Eastern Avenue, it's been moving up now for two and a half years. We all know the issues of bank foreclosures in the city. Sometimes the city can get control of ones that where they haven't paid taxes, become zombie properties in our industry. This is one we were watching for two and a half years. We just went to bank auction last month and was, we were looking to get control of it. So we're going to work with some partners and try to get that renovated. The other two properties there coming up Eastern, they'll be renovated by one of our partners, Bonnie Novella. We still put a bit of work on Eastern Avenue, and the city was able to secure $1 million, Restore New York Rent, which will help with a lot of different projects. These are just two.
You know, let me just reinforce, so this property, major corner on Eastern Avenue, you know, large parcel, and we continue to pursue it. Now we've got control, and now we can make something happen there. And with Bonnie Novella, you know, she is committed to restoring parts of Eastern Avenue, and that's a really important thing. Our corridor strategy is paying off with individuals saying, I'm committed to help our neighborhoods, to help restore our neighborhoods, to help move this investment along. So Mont Pleasant is our new corridor, our new focus in 2017 and 18, not that we're forgetting about our other corridors, but in our grants, we talked about grants already. Our latest community redevelopment initiative from the Attorney General, we're going to focus dollars into Mont Pleasant. And there's a number of areas that need help. And we are going to focus, and we, myself and the executive director, David Hobie-Camp, met with the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, one of the neighborhood groups last week. Great response on what are we going to focus on, what do they want us to focus on, and where can we help by taking down some of these properties that are clearly, demand for services is high. The structures themselves are dangerous and they need to come down.
Yeah, we were the Neighborhood Association meeting last, last week, and a few of the council members were there as well. Thank you for your support. Really appreciate it.
Go ahead, David, let's talk about some of the renovations that were, that we've been talking about.
This is 906, I've been working with the banks. We're looking to get this as a bank foreclosed property, they're committing available to the land bank, they're renovating. We're going to work with Habitat for Humanity to do about $25,000,000 worth of work to this property with their support. And then we're hoping that the proceeds from selling, everyone try to look to sell to more occupied, hopefully another Habitat project. And then, you know, a big focus area for us, of course, and all of our partners here, is this block next to the library. It was announced that the library is looking at having, putting up a new library. The city IDA purchased the former Chia Bobs, and Metroplex is working with the owner of Chubbies to secure that property as well. So, you know, we're very excited about that, and I think kind of the centerpiece of what we're working on. But that's not alone of what we're doing on Crane Street. Obviously, the city has been a tremendous partner. The investment Orchard Park that's planned, it's about a half a million dollar investment. The Crane Street corridor lights, these were all major elements to our application, and really, I think, held us to the top of best Attorney General. And then you have the new Boys and Girls Club that's planned, and as I said, the new library at Greenwich.
So we just want to say thank you. We want to thank the city, city council, and all of our partners for the past four, going on five years now, of commitment, commitment to the land bank's mission, commitment to the board of directors, and commitment to wanting to see our city move forward. It's a, it's a great program, or, you know, it's a great initiative that we've taken. I'm very humbled to be the chairman. I need to be reappointed to the board, I don't need to be the chairman, but I need to be reappointed if you want to have me continue to sit on that board, and I'm happy to do it. And I would ask for city council support tonight in moving that forward. There are plenty of people I'm sure that can do that job as well, and I'm happy to transition to other people that we think could be more suited. But the land bank has made a significant difference in what we're doing in the city, and it's what your support has been able to do back. So I'll say thank you very much, appreciate your support over the last five years.
Is all good now?
Good job.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Thank you, David, thanks for pulling us together.
What did I need to screen again? Yes, please. Okay, it's perfect. It's really, you're fighting to clear that. Okay, next is the Affirmative Action Advisory Board with their 2016 report.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor McCarthy and President of ASO and the city council members. So I am to be on the Affirmative Action Advisory Board, and this is Ali Pappa. She's also on the Affirmative Action Advisory Board. So as dear community stakeholders, the Affirmative Action Advisory Board is pleased to release its 2016 annual report. Although we was unable to achieve what we hope to achieve, we are very proud of the work we have accomplished thus far towards improving equity for everyone who lives and does business in the city. This year, the board would like to extend a heartfelt appreciation to those who attended our meetings and share their experiences and expertise. Specifically, the board would like to recognize the Schenectady Municipal Housing Authority, as well as Rivers Casino for demonstrating that they do not simply believe in diversity and inclusion. They are committed to executing strategies that promote equal opportunities for all. So they've attended some of our board meetings to try to diversify their employees as well. So moreover, the board would like to express its deepest gratitude to Councilwoman Miss Porterfield for her presence at our board meetings and assisting us. We also would like to thank Mr. Palazzo and Ed Kozier for supporting us and getting the Affirmative Action Manager for the city. We also would like to thank Mayor McCarthy and the city council for approving a full-time affirmative action officer in the 2017 budget. So we are very pleased to know that. In closing, the Affirmative Action Advisory Board remains committed to its purpose of helping the city become one that thrives on skills and talents of its rich constituents. However, after the second year operation, we understand better that a volunteer group of nine members is insufficient to make the types of changes our community needs and deserves. Consequently, we are calling out to all stakeholders, public officials, business leaders, and most important, our residents, to join us in this important work. We need to hear from everyone to ensure our recommendations to the mayor and city council are comprehensive and relevant. Help us make Schenectady a community that maximizes the human potential in every member of our great city. Within our court, you would see, we have an overview of when the board was first founded. It also talks about things we do as members of this board. There's different subcommittees that we work on. We have the discrimination and complaint subcommittee, we have the M W B subcommittee, and we have improvement and hiring. So what we do is we look over documents pertaining to each of those subcommittees. We make recommendations based on what we think would be better to help the city be more diverse. Our general findings and recommendations. Unfortunately, the AAV is unable to report any significant progress because it did not receive approval, and its recommended goes into audit. Since then, the board has been waiting for staff support to come in for. That said, with the city council approving a full-time affirmative action officer as part of the 2017 budget, the board will have the necessary personnel support to focus on the following three major areas of city operation. Reviewing the city's employment process, recruitment, testing, interviews, and hiring, and developing recommendations on how to increase the number of qualified ethnic minority candidates. Two, reviewing the city's procurement process, outreach, fit-in selection and contracting, and developing recommendations on how to increase the number of contracted local M W Bs and S D B O B businesses. And the third is reviewing the city's discrimination and harassment policies and procedures, and developing recommendations on how to make them more accessible and offer clearer instructions. So as the board, we are very pleased to have our very own affirmative action officer, Ron Gardner. We are pleased with the pick, and we look forward to working with Mr. Gardner in our future meetings. Thank you.
Everybody's very thorough.
Very good.
Thank you very much. We appreciate all your hard work. Okay, we're moving on to code sharing presentation by Mr. Fromm, someone else wants to.
We have people from Schenectady. I apologize if this speaker is not here, but, yes, hi. How are you, Rachel Ward? Nice to meet you, yes. Yeah, you want to do that? Okay, perfect.
Okay, so if you want to introduce yourself.
Tom Terrance-Wortman, Director of Technology Innovation Services at the Center for Technology Government, University of Albany. We've been working with the city of Schenectady and three other regional cities on this project for the past few years. We've been here at the beginning of the kickoff of the project, probably about two years ago. I'm joined here with Megan Sutherland, my colleague. And just a brief overview of the project. Project goals, to build technical organizational co-conforcement capabilities within each of the four cities, so that each can increase the efficiency and effectiveness of their co-conforcement market. Also, to develop the technical data policy foundation and the shared co-conforcement information resource, naming municipalities to potentially, to participate in the statewide sharing resource. To increase, encourage increasing uniformity and processing definition within the size of the four cities regarding information sharing, and establish a culture and community of knowledge sharing among the enforcement.
I'm sorry, I don't need to interrupt your book. We have three, we have Amsterdam, Blenheim, Schenectady.
Troy.
Troy, okay, great. Wonderful, thank you, guys.
David Fromm asked me to come and provide an update about the requirements gathering and the process used to select the software. Through the, working with this four cities, software is needed to support the ongoing operations, updated software. And we followed the Center Assistant City of Schenectady in following a structured and rigorous process in selecting software. Requirements gathering is a process. Stakeholders from each of the cities attended more than 10 workshops, two-site visits, at least to each location, over a six-month period of time. During this time, the stakeholders identified eight programs of work that were required to carry out co-conforcement. They did process modeling of these eight different processes, eight programs of work, identifying core data elements and information that needs to be shared across different, through the departments and the different cities. Through the site visits and workshops, software technological solutions were identified, and additional needs for information sharing was identified. These programs of work fit nicely into three categories, voiding, mitigating, resulting. These categories were identified in the workshops as needed to fight flight. And stakeholders from each city that were responsible for carrying out each of these different programs of work were at each of the different stakeholders' meetings, providing their feedback. The data gathered from the workshops and the site visits were put together and listed and organized in the requirements document. The requirements document was shared with each of the cities. They reviewed, commented, and provided additional information into the requirements document. The requirements document contains all the features, functionality, capabilities needed for a software system to meet these needs. It contains over 300 different requirements, and this document was used to, Schenectady used this requirements document to create the art. So that is the end of the requirements gathering phase. The review process is a multi-phase process. First, starting with the review of the proposals, and then going into a more depth review of the actual software. Each of the stakeholders that were involved in defining the requirements were involved in reviewing the proposals. Through the workshops were created the requirements for the proposals and through best practice on proposals. They each, each stakeholder within different cities did their reviews, they met as a city, and came up with their, their choice for that city. Then each of the cities got together and made decisions and choices about which proposal to move for. Then the next phase was what we called scripted demonstrations. Traditionally, with software review, there, the, there's canned reviews, there's pre-prescribed review process. In this project, the teams took all their requirements and turned those into what we call scripted demos. So each of those eight programs of work, vendor needed to take those and demonstrate to all the stakeholders on how that software met those requirements. All the stakeholders that were responsible for those different programs of work attended these demos and had their review worksheets with them to collect the results as the demonstrations went on. Demonstrations lasted three and a half to four days, full days, so it was quite rigorous. After the face-to-face scripted demos, there was a time to, to do webinars. There was additional questions after, after the groups got together, they talked about the results and questions came out. So there was two webinars presented by the vendors, and in addition to that, they had the opportunity to use evaluation accounts to try out the software at their own. Okay, so after the final evaluations, after these scripted demos, the evaluation accounts, and the webinars, all the stakeholders got together to discuss and review their results, and, and coming up with, with a selection where to move forward. And that, and that's where they began.
Yes, so these were, you know, following the scripted demonstrations right there, to say, the cities came together and CTG facilitated workshops, helping them understand what their scores were, talking through different decision-making exercises to help the cities come to a, come to a.
So that's the, through the additional questions, the cities were able to identify first-time costs, upfront costs, and break it down into yearly ongoing costs. Identifying in detail what specific pieces is necessary for their environment integration, maybe migration, new equipment. So as far as the project is concerned, the next phases are implementing, installing the system, getting it operational use, working on the governance model. This is a shared resource, this will provide shared resources of data, and when you're sharing data, there needs to be some governance around. And when you're sharing data, there needs to be some governance around the collection and the use of that data. And, and the development and passing of the shared resource, cities being able to share some portion of their, most of the data.
So all of the cities are going to have the same exact software or they can have a complex, they can have more in-depth software and everybody's going to have access to it across all the cities?
For the code enforcement aspect, this one platform that will replace the code enforcement software that the city is using. The city is using many other aspects, other software packages to accomplish other tasks in the city, and those will be made the same, to stop the world from integrating it.
No, yeah, I just wanted to know, we're not stopping everything. This is going to work with what we already currently have, correct? It's going to replace what we have, but it's going to work with other systems.
That's correct.
The mayor has a new idea.
We'll create a platform, we expand it upon forward. The other aspect of this is where it's being tested, excuse me, deployed in the four cities. We would look really for the standardization to be made available statewide. So this, it's not the end of the project. It's really one step.
So it's the beginning, okay.
In what will be a long process before you get full statewide deployment.
Does it, does it work with munis though?
Yes.
Does it integrate with munis?
Yes.
And what happened to Troy?
Yeah, why don't they have to pay anything?
We don't have Troy in our.
The requirements gathering, they were part of the requirements gathering.
My neck, I'm sorry.
And they had a different software package that they were using, just like each of the cities. And what they recognized after seeing all their requirements written out by all the cities, they recognized that if they were to upgrade the package that they had already, they would be meeting those requirements for their city. So they'll be using a different platform. And then data from their platform will be pulled into this platform so that it will be shared with everybody.
So they're using.
So it will be integrated.
So, so bottom line, what is our cost going to be? I'm afraid to ask the question here. I mean, I know we received, we received grant funding for this, I believe, right? From the state or whatever? Or we received some funding from this, but I mean, the numbers here are quite large. So bottom line, what is our, our final cost? Or somewhere in the range, although what you have on this table, is the table numbers direct?
Yes. And what I don't know is what is covered.
By the grants.
By the grant on your paper. That's a question that David Frunk has to answer.
The proposal come to the council, and I don't think we're looking for a vote tonight, is that we will modify the fee structure. So the end cost of the city will be basically zero. We'll also increase in user friendliness for the system so that people could make an application for a permit remotely, have it issued, they could do their payment. There's some that would require review where there has to be planned submissions. There's a lot of things where we don't require plan submission. There are minor repairs, standard undertakings, and those we're looking to automate that and again, make it more user friendly. But to have a fee structure, I believe that is approximately $10 on the field that it would pay for itself so that the cost of the city going forward would be nothing, even though we're still looking based on the usage and what fee would be in place, the city may share in some of that revenue coming in. That would also be through the other communities also.
All right, so we don't have the grant funding allowance in here anyplace, what we're receiving to offset these initial costs.
Correct.
Okay.
This is the analysis, and it's going to come pretty close to zero. That's a number I thought you'd like.
Same question.
My question was obvious.
So we can expect going forward that we'll get a proposal that shows what's covered by the grant and what the actual cost of the city is?
Correct. And what that proposed fee structure would be for the excellent.
Other questions? Do you have any other questions?
No, I'm just showing one piece that I have a question.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming in. I appreciate it.
I think some of the discussion with the other communities is whether they would pay for the money upfront and then take the additional revenue, which would come out better than just looking at what the possible scenarios are, where they're not as advanced as we were in Schenectady. Everybody's moving at a little bit different pace. The state also wants that because if you look to deploy it statewide, you will have some communities that are fairly automated, much more advanced than other ones that are not, is forward-thinking in how do you cover all the bases to get to a platform that would provide uniformity across the entire city.
The software company that was selected is here to do a review of that software exactly, if you want.
Really? They may have a fee structure.
If you ask about capabilities and things like that, that's something.
Thank you. I'm Dan Foster. I'm the general manager at General Code. We're the company that signed in for the contract that we're working on. And I don't, I don't have the figures for how much of the grant funding because there are still some things that are standing on that question that we need to hear about. So we've actually presented two alternatives of the proposal with City of Schenectady to make sure, the objective was to make sure that it was cost neutral to the cities we've been working with, David, and all of that. Just by way of background, General Code, just wanted to give you a sense that General Code is, we're not a fly-by-night operation. We've been in business for years. We're a longtime vendor to the City of Schenectady for your code services, your certification and publishing of your ordinances, both in paper and online. We've been doing that for years. We've served primarily in local government. We have been a reseller of Ulicity software, which is a software package that's been chosen for many years. We have over 100 employees and we've installed Ulicity in many other states. Interestingly, that's where we're involved in a discussion with several communities in the suburbs of Cleveland who are going through the same discussions about joint and shared database services for battling urban decay and light and so forth. So that's, that's much earlier in the stages there, but something that's very much similar to what you engaged in here, working with CTT. Will Labassier is the CEO of SCA Software Consulting Associates. They are the software developer based in Red Hook, New York, that we work with. They make the software, we sell it, service it, install it, do all the data migration and support it after the, after the sale and installation. So we work very much together in partnership. They've been with the city three, primarily software development staff who are working with us, and they have rapidly expanded customer base with customers in all kinds of states. But it's all New York-based, so you can add. Quick Ulicity five overview, just so you know, what we're working with is a cloud-based solution, providing code enforcement and all the other things you see listed here. I think one of the biggest advantages of the software now is the really excellent mobile device access for live field inspection. We found in communities that are using the software and we have that service going with mobile implementation. There's tremendous time savings and better accuracy of tracking data. They're going out in the field, doing their inspections, logging in photos, doing it all live, it's all live feed. So that's a tremendous advantage for the software will be for the City of Schenectady. We just, we added some slides just to show some interfaces, a little hard to see, code enforcement permitting, inspections and scheduling, issuing certificates, doing real property updates with the RPS state system. It's all integrated within the program. Citizen access, the mayor mentioned that, the ability to go online, see the status of permits, see the status of development, you know, be able to submit work orders, be able to submit complaints about properties and so forth, lobby, able to do that online when the system is up and running. A real advantage for the citizens. We have GIS interface, so the ability to be able to view maps and overlays within the program, to be able to go and look inside parcel data from a map, so you can see what's going on in various locations. And again, citizens can have access to that as well as part of the program. You know, the biggest things that we talked about through this process, and it really was a rigorous process, Derek mentioned the length of time, you know, the development of the RF response, their team and the city's teams did a tremendous job. It's by far the most thorough review of software that we've ever gone through. So they took a very, very hard look at all the competitors. But we're going to benefit greatly, and the biggest things we talked about are time savings, being able to track, you know, economic development stuff more accurately in terms of, you know, cost, you know, submission of permits, applications and so forth, fees that go along with it. So that's, that's all part of the program. So we're anticipating, you know, seeing the cost savings over time for the city as well as, as time savings for all folks who use it through this tool. And we have the abilities, the question was asked about integration with munis. That's, that's certainly part of the, part of the program. Any, any software, departmental software, where there's a need for it to feed information back and forth with Ulicity software, we have the ability to make those integrations happen. We do that for local customers, whether it's document manager type software, or financial software, or other types of software that may be incorporated. And there's opportunity for expansion too. It would work off of the BPW fleet management functionality. It's probably the next one for, for stuff down the road. So any questions? The numbers are there, and we're certainly, you know, working with David and the team, you know, we'll follow up and can answer any questions that they have, they have. But we just wanted to give you that.
Questions about software?
Quick one. In regards to the expandability of it, you have the GIS interface. So obviously, there's satellite imagery that's capable there and thinking in the future of how we could integrate that with the police and fire department for safety issues and maybe, you know, ideally, it probably won't happen, but it'd be nice, like layouts of buildings and so forth. Is that something that we could expand into in the future?
Yeah, the nice thing about the software is that it's a site license. So if you want to provide police department, fire department access to the software so they can do some, and see data or maps or what have you associated with that location, that's certainly possible.
We've seen other communities do, yeah, kind of pre-planned stuff where they'll go in on properties, attach the documents that they pre-planned, highlight trust properties, highlight properties that have high code enforcement issues or other, you know, vicious stuffs, you know, that we've seen all sorts of different uses. So when someone responds to an issue, they get, they see right on their tablet, you know, this property has these issues going in.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you, Don.
Yes, thank you.
Quite a score on your time.
Oh. They don't have Schenectady either. I'll talk to them.
Okay, moving on to the land bank, the reappointment of Mr. Russo. I think he certainly showed us what he's got and that he's working hard, so.
Did we get a resume from Mr. Russo, by chance?
We got that formally, not new, not new to any of us here.
So can I make a motion?
Okay. All right, all was in favor, all right, congratulations to him. Go anywhere.
Thank you.
Well, that's a new task, very sweet.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to the discussion of immigrant support. So certainly we've had a lot of conversations at the rail about this. It's looking as if, you know, we've had around 60 people come and talked in support of it, we've had another dozen or so speak about their concerns for it. I think that certainly through listening to our constituents and also news that have been expressed to the council, that right now we're more focused on our interpretation of that for Schenectady. I know that Mr. Palamene and Mr. Kozier and Mr. Mitzvaren and Ms. Luskei of Zunis brought their ideas to the table a couple of weeks ago, but I asked that, told them we could all be present in the conversation. Since then, I've taken part of their resolution along with the leading concerns shown at the rail, and also looked at Saratoga Springs and Hudson and surrounding other sanctuary cities, and brought something forward just simply for discussion as a starting point. Ms. Porterfield also submitted a very inclusive and well-written resolution for discussion. So right now, I will open it up for how we might integrate all three of these proposed resolutions into something that we can all feel comfortable with, that certainly lets our citizens know that we embrace the diversity of our city and we want our citizens to feel safe and that we are a welcoming city. So with that, I don't know how people want to start the conversation, but I will open the floor to anyone's questions or comments at this point. I assume everyone has read the various proposals.
Yes, so I, there, well, I've read all three and I also submitted the one that's actually on page 20, which says draft through it, which would recognize Schenectady as a fair and welcoming city. And in that, I took it into consideration, and one that was submitted a couple of weeks ago, at a committee meeting I wasn't here, but I did get a copy of it and included some of that language. And also included language which we've consistently said, the mayor's consistently said, and that the police department, you know, has already long held to the practice, that it does not inquire about a person's immigration status, initial contact. And, and one of, I think, most important things is that I did include that where there, if there were to be a public registry for people based on their religion or national origin, that we would not, you know, abide by that. Essentially, I mean, the rest of it's there and it just talks about, you know, how Schenectady respects everyone based on, you know, regards of ethnicity, language, and all of those things. So, you know, this is what I'm submitting for consideration. And if there's any questions about the language that I propose, I'm to that.
So I guess, and to be honest with you, I really don't know how to detail it one bit at a time, right? So I guess I'll ask if there's anything in any of the proposed resolutions that anyone doesn't feel like they can support or doesn't feel worded in a matter that they're comfortable with or anything that they'd like to see changed or adjusted.
I'll just, I want to comment, the resolution that Mr. Palamene and four of us have been working on was actually a resolution that was adopted by the U.S. Conference of Mayors. It was from the city of Orlando, really urging the need for a comprehensive immigration reform. And we feel that those five paragraphs in there are really very, very important. And we feel that those five paragraphs in there are really very, very important now to the state of Schenectady, but again, to the U.S. Conference of Mayors, where they, again, I believe our mayor was there himself and of course spoke before Congress on different issues. But I think it really is a good beginning here, if you would, to moving forward, hearing all the needs and concerns of everybody. We certainly appreciate all that. But my main concern is that we are sworn to take an oath of office. And our first oath of office is to uphold the laws and the Constitution of the United States. And I think if we try to change this in any way, shape, or form to making the Schenectady Police Department or any of our local police agencies adhere to a policy that we, as city councilmen, are trying to move forward on, I just don't think are proper at this point. I think we are legislators, and I think the law enforcement has to follow the law. And I really think that that is where I stand on the issue. As the mayor has spoken, as both our police chief and our sheriff have said in many talks with us, we do not have an issue with ICE in the county or in the city. Our police officers do not reach out and say, "Excuse me, what is your immigration status?" That is not their first question. We are certainly, and I didn't point to John Burks. But it's a very serious topic and concern that I feel needs to be talked about. And, you know, under President Obama, I mean, that president deported more illegal immigrants in our United States than any other president ever. And I think the sanctuary city's been around for a long time. The word welcoming city, if you do that on a Google search, kicks you right back into sanctuary cities on your, the Google search. And I think working, again, with the Conference of Mayors, this proposal that they worked on for comprehensive immigration reform, I think is very, very important. It's a good starting point. Certainly, the conversation should and will continue, I'm sure, in our community. But I think our first duty is to support our law enforcement and to uphold the Constitution of the United States. And I think that is what I am going to push forward for. So I'm very comfortable with the first piece. And again, there's some other needs and concerns, issues that I do have with the other ones, again, specifically to the police and everything. Police department's the police department. And we, as a councilman, should not be making their laws to change our laws or their duties, what they have to do.
Yep, and I think that, you know, if you look at the resolution that I'm proposing, it certainly includes the call for comprehensive immigration reform, but it fleshes things out a little bit more and is a little, I think, expressive than the more condensed resolution put forward. And it clearly just reflects what the mayor has spoken out publicly about. And that is that we don't have, you know, we recognize that it's a federal act and that also it is not our, you know, habit to inquire first and foremost about a person's immigration status. So I'm not, I'm not in any way, shape, or form recommending in my compilation that we uphold. But I also think that while the Conference of Mayors resolution is certainly, you know, covers the points, we have also a city with some very well-thought-out, well-spoken residents that have very specific concerns. So while that is a national resolution, I tried to personalize it a little bit more to the direct concerns of some of the people coming to the rail while still respecting the majority of the council and their comfort level on this subject. I think, you know, much of what Ms. Porterfield suggested did the same. So I would like to, instead of taking a cookie cutter resolution produced by people that aren't from this community, take some of the points made by our own residents that are concerned and weave those into a variation of the resolution put forward a couple of weeks ago.
Well, if I just piggyback on your resolution, paragraph four there, where it says, "Whereas the city of Scott is committed to protecting the civil and human rights of all individuals," the last line there, "or immigration status." If we find the person. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if you find the person to be illegal, criminal status, I mean, that's.
And if you feel, if you feel, would feel more comfortable with moving that part of it. I'm here to compromise and come to consensus and not have, you know, have all of us give input, including our citizens, to something that we can all feel comfortable with. Any other input? Anything from Ms. Porterfield, which I also think was really well-written, better than mine, far more inclusive than mine? You know, there's really some wonderful points. Ms. Porterfield talks about community policing and the fact that it depends on trust in every community member. And I think, you know, that's one of my very deep concerns. I, you know, I don't want any member of our community to live in a situation where they're afraid to call a law enforcement. You know, I feel like, you know, and the other aspect is where they're afraid to get involved as a witness, you know, to the benefit of our police department. So although, I mean, if the council majority doesn't feel comfortable saying, you know, that it's not going to come into play at all, that's one thing. But I would like to reach out to our citizens and encourage them to know that they are a citizen of this community and that they, if they're injured or in trouble, that they can call our law enforcement without having fear. Because no one should have, you know, live in that circumstance.
So my question was, you only, you picked up like one thing from one of the resolutions, is, I haven't talked here from any other council members. In looking at it, it seems to me that we could come up with some, a compilation of the three that were submitted and make sure that we, identifying things. You seem to have a concern where it says that the police department has long held to practice that it does not inquire about a person's immigration status. That's just a statement. So that's not saying that, that's not saying, that's just a statement which has been made consistently. So it's not saying to the police, "Don't do anything." It's just what the police chief, what the mayor has said, what's been said consistently. That's a statement. It's not, it's not trying to tie the hand of the police. Am I correct?
Yeah, I agree with that, right. I agree with you.
So it's not trying to tie the hand of the police at all. And additionally, the other one about community policing, which, you know, we've worked with law enforcement for a long time and we, law enforcement really depends on our citizens to make sure that, well, not to make sure, but to assist in, you know, identifying when crimes are committed, et cetera. So those are the reasons that I've included that. And the other piece that I did include also was that about our, about our community stakeholders and making sure that we're engaged with our community stakeholders, because it's been clear that the community stakeholders have come to the rail, both for and against. So I think that we need to be able to represent both sides. And I know that some people have concerns about the term sanctuary city. You said that in Google it, it brings it right back to you, but for some, some people have concerns of that. So we can call it something else, if that's a major concern. But I think there is value in all of those that are proposed and that we could, you know, try to work together to come up with a document, a resolution that everyone is comfortable with and also outlines our commitment as a city.
Ms. Zuluski, please.
So I think the endorsing of comprehensive immigration reform, this resolution, I think covers all the bases without putting the police department in a, in any kind of precarious situation. And it certainly does, it says right here, "Flustering a welcoming and secure city for all its residents, regardless of who they are, where they're from." So I think, I mean, I'd like to follow the lead of the Conference of Mayors. I think they've, they've put a lot of work into this. And I believe our mayor, you know, is supportive of it, as Mr. Kozier has said. And I would like to see us move this resolution forward with the way it states right now. I think we've covered everything that we need to cover without going into, unfortunately, into, into anything that will, you know, put us in a situation where we would be breaking law.
I agree with Ms. Zuluski Wosunis. This is a fairly comprehensive proposal that the U.S. Conference of Mayors has put forward. And I think it reflects our city's diversity and the importance of the diversity to our city without getting us into a legal situation that we should not be in.
Okay, so I guess at this point, to not waste any time, the four people that put this resolution forward, are you open to supplementing it with some of the more personalized points from our citizens to put something forward that is a little more inclusive? Or do you just simply want to put this forward, go on and ask it?
I think this is very inclusive.
I agree with that.
I think this is very inclusive. You know, the city has a strong immigrant-enriched culture and it's stated in here, and we're, I think this is extremely inclusive.
Ms. Porterfield, so this is the question. So is there nothing in the other resolutions that at all define that, is maybe a statement towards what we're trying to get to? I, I see this as five paragraphs, and I think there's language that is in the others that does not exist in it.
Me personally, I'm very comfortable with the comprehensive immigration reform without any additions. I think it pretty well covers what we need to do.
Ms. Mitzvaher?
No, I just want to echo with Ms. Mitzvaher and Ms. Palamini. I mean, the comprehensive immigration reform resolution, we need to call on Congress to, you know, enact laws to look at reforming immigration. And Congress needs to, you know, move forward and get the act together and move with the resolution, with laws that cover immigration. And we can do resolution on top of resolution, but it's not going to, not going to go nowhere until Congress needs that. And I think this resolution covers everything. And look, it's coming from the Conference of Mayors, that they looked at it, they tackle every aspect of immigration. I'm calling on Congress. I think that's what we need to do.
I have to say, I don't think it tackles everything. And what I really would like to be able to see is something that's more, speaks to us personally, our citizens here in the city of Schenectady. I think there is some language in the others that we can pull out that addresses that because these are the people that we represent and people who have come to speak to us. So some personal, more personalized language really, I think, would enchant this particular resolution. You know, yes, immigration reform needs to be done. There's no question about it. But just simply stating that the council is committed to meet stakeholders, and the part about the police, I'll go back to that, just stating the fact that what was already said, that the police won't do that. I'm not sure I understand the resistance to that or it's not putting the police in any type of position, simply stating a fact that's already been stated many times.
And I just want to point out also that I was well-aware and tuned into the fact that you felt the immigration reform was an important part of this, and that's why I included it. And I'm not, I am not saying we should just, you know, adopt what I put together here. But I did try to take all voices and bring them together and just try to flesh out a little bit with some additional points. Mr. Brady, did you have anything to add?
Just that I'm, if you want to talk about stakeholders, the stakeholders that have contacted me are dead against any kind of sanctuary city. You know, that's what I have to tell you. Those are the people that are calling me in a lot. Veterans groups, police officers, law enforcement. They're calling this a solution without a problem, is what's been called to me. So is this a big problem? I'm really not sure. We have a lot of big problems, certainly in Schenectady. But I think, I have to agree that this need for comprehensive immigration reform covers all the bases. It's a good outline for everything. And again, I agree with Mr. Kozier. You know, I put my hand on the Bible, as all of us did, and we swore to uphold the constitutional laws of the United States of America. Now, that's important when you do that. It isn't anything else. It's an important thing. That's what we do, and I take that very seriously. And I don't think we should be telling our police department to go against anything that the federal government is going to request. That's the federal government. That's the main government. We're a little, little piece of sand. That's what we are. Now, are we going to make a statement to say Schenectady is a place that, that police aren't going to do their job when asked? I don't think we should put the police in this position. I never thought we should put the police in this position. They have enough trouble right now to worry about things like that. So they have to do the job that they've been sworn to do also, and they're sworn to do a job. So you're putting people, I think, in compromising positions all the way across the board. And I'm, I'm fine with the resolution that the four councilpeople put together.
Okay, and just for clarification, nowhere in the proposal we're asking for this to be written. So nowhere in this proposal, in this proposed resolution is that stated. So I just want that clarified, and people can certainly access this information on the website also. So we have long come to the fact that majority of the council does not feel comfortable with that. So nobody at that table, at this table is ready. Want that clear and right up front. So it sounds like the majority would like to go with the proposed resolutions. I don't think we should spend any more time on this. Yes, Mr. Palamini?
I'd just like to read it so everybody knows clearly what's in it, and then I'll make a motion to move this. So whereas the United States of America is a nation of immigrants and wave after wave of immigrants seeking a better life has built our nation and brought significant social, economic, and cultural benefits to communities nationwide. And whereas in the city of Schenectady, immigrants have enriched our city's culture, increased our productivity and innovation, emboldened our economy. And whereas the city of Schenectady celebrates the diversity of its residents and is proud to be an inclusive and compassionate city. And whereas the city of Schenectady works to foster a welcoming and secure city for all of their residents, regardless of who they are or where they come from. And therefore, be it resolved, the city of Schenectady is asking the federal government to enact comprehensive immigration reform and enforce the nation's immigration laws in a humane manner that does not disrupt the lives of city residents. I'd like to move this resolution.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Discussion, I still would like to, one other point, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Kozier.
Again, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, in addition to our mayor, Gary McCarthy signing off on this, Albany mayor Kathy Sheehan had supported the resolution, as did Niagara Falls mayor, the city of Rochester, and I believe it was Batavia. Those are the five New York, no, Syracuse, I'm sorry, not Batavia, but Syracuse. And Syracuse mayor is Republican. So this was a very good outline. If you look up immigration reform, the comprehensive immigration reform, it does talk about community policing. It talks about the programs and policies that ICE has to offer when they pick up and detain somebody. And it also talks about the warrants. So this was just a condensed version of all the different topics and subjects material that is in this comprehensive immigration reform. And I really urge folks to, to look at that online and to really dig into it and read it, what it really is and entails. And you'll see that, again, this five paragraphs here that we are submitting, are offering here, really does cover a lot more than what you're reading here before you.
And I appreciate that. And I will state for the record that I wish this body was functioning in a consensus manner, working together, and everyone giving a little, as opposed to what occurred. But here we are, and forward we go. And I believe Ms. Porterfield has a two comment.
Yes. Based on what Mr. Kozier says, I wasn't aware, because I can't tell by reading this, that the, where it was taken from even talks about community policing and ICE and all that. So it would be, it would have been ideal to be able to see that as part of what we considered. So, it would have been ideal to be able to see that as part of what we considered, but it's not here. So, it's challenging to, you know, to say that it's comprehensive, but then you're saying it's really condensed, so there's a lot more to it than left out. I would have liked to have seen that part of it, and, you know, perhaps that would have made a difference. I can't say because it's not here, but it is, you're basically saying that a lot was left out, is what I'm understanding.
Again, the U.S. Conference of Mayors, that's what they did. Apparently, they condensed all their conversations that they had with the conference for those days, they condensed it into this resolution. Yes, and again, this is almost word for word what the City of Orlando, Florida, used, and we just took out Orlando and we put in City of Schenectady instead of City of.
And.
Didn't change anything.
Immigration reform is a little bit, it's different than, and I, first of all, let me just be clear that I am in support of immigration reform, no question, but I think we're, we're talking about the fair and welcoming city. I think we're going a little bit beyond that. So, this resolution definitely addresses immigration reform, but it does not, in my opinion, address what we've been consistently talking about in terms of respecting and all of our citizens in terms of that, so.
And I will close unless anyone has anything to add afterward, in the fact that it's, I'll beat the dead horse and say it's nice that the conference mayors put this together, but we had 60 comments mail, and even more so call, and even more so email, and I have never seen the likes of that, not even from the casino, and the missing voice of our citizens in this resolution, I find very, very disappointing. So, are there any other questions or comments? Okay. So, I will ask for a motion to adjourn government operations. Moved by Ms. Zalinski-Balzounis, seconded by Ms. Palomini, all is in favor? I adjourned.
Call to our Public Safety Committee, first item, crossing guard discussion, Ms. Reedy.
Well, unfortunately, the mayor left. I don't know if he's come up with anything or not. What the heck? He must have saw where it was coming up on the agenda.
He's got his sons of Italy.
What the heck?
The last that I knew, I have double-checked, I've triple-checked, actually, with the mayor's office, and he has not recommended anything as of yet. So, I mean, it really is a function of the council, if they want to put something in place. The mayor had, you know, kind of volunteered to bring something to us.
Right, that's the only reason that, because he said he put something together. That came from his mouth, not mine, so I agree.
Yeah.
So, again, I did discuss that MHA, Schenectady Housing Authority, we actually waived the fees now for those who are taking the background or the drug tests, and I talked to Rich Almanac, the executive director over there, and said, since we've enacted, I believe it was three years ago, he said they've only had one individual who had to take the drug test, actually failed it, and then they did not get reimbursed for that. However, in discussing that, and we certainly have a different situation here with our crossing guard. The men and women that do this are making, what, maybe $100 a week?
Exactly.
And to front the $85.
I mean, full salary.
For the week, yeah, for the week. So, you know, something that we can talk about or even kick around for a couple of weeks, but if there's any way we can even propose.
Maybe adding it into the bonus or something like that.
Or we can reimburse them after 90 days on the job.
Right.
If they're there, if they take the test, they pass the test, you're in 60 days.
Yeah. So, they just don't give them the background check, and then they're gone in two weeks, and they have to background check the whole.
Now, according to Rich, Mr. Almanac, it's 40 and 45, it's not 85 for just the drug test. So, I guess they gotta do a background check first, which is only like $40, that's what they're paying.
It's 87.50.
And then the other half is for the drug test, so I don't know what that balances out to being.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Cheryl Harris told me it's 87.50.
87.50.
That came from her.
So, you know, I'd just like to propose.
And that's about a week's salary.
Possibly, if we can.
What I, what we're thinking, are we talking Ms. Palomini and myself, that we can reimburse them 60 days after being on the job?
After being on the job. For the crossing guards.
That's something that we can move forward with, you know. I am in agreement with that.
That we get paid for.
So, we can move this because it's been a couple of weeks now we have this on the agenda, back and forth.
Again, the problem comes up if we're using parking enforcement people to cross, because we have to use police officers, it's kind of expensive. That's expensive to the city to do that, for the revenue that they can bring in, too, so it is kind of expensive. So, we could do, because that's all, this Harris brought that to my attention, that's why she's having a problem getting guards on board. I see we just hired one, though, maybe, yeah, last week or so, so we do have one more on board, which is, but if we can make it a little more easier for the states to say they'll be reimbursed, that's something. And that's incentive to keep them on the job, to almost like a second bonus.
Right. I mean. We thought about the bonus idea, but they got paid, I think.
Yeah, it gets kind of crazy.
I haven't asked 60 days, at least they get paid.
I'm good with that.
No, originally, I proposed 90 days, and I was thinking a third, a third, a third, but I was trying to think of, 60 days is a long time to wait for $85 when you're making, you know what I mean? So, I was trying to break it up and give it, give them, you know, but that may be, end up being.
Accounting, too.
Counting for the city to track, so it might be better.
Make it too hard, yeah, to track now.
I mean.
I'm fine, I'm fine.
Is that all right?
Six days.
So, now, Carl, does that become a union issue by any chance? Does this have any?
Full-time workers aren't, they're not unionized.
Why do they take on unions?
Ah, passion.
They don't have a union to resolve.
They take them out of my seasonal workers.
Or do they not have crossing guards?
Yeah.
It might be because you're county.
No, they take it out of my city kids, yeah.
But they're full-time.
Full-time workers, they do pay in union dues, which is a theory they cover by part of contract, but in a technically part of the union.
Okay. As long as we don't, it's not a union issue, that's fine. I'm fine. I think it's a good idea, they could give them some incentive.
So, six days. So, 60 days reimbursement for the drug test, so that we need to just, we resolution.
At least they know where they're from and don't get the money back. And that's a good incentive to keep them on the job.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
That's good.
I think I'm going to just make, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice, thank you. Thank you.
Here. Next item.
So, is there a budget line here that, or are you gonna be doing a budget reallocation for money and then?
No, the panel in front. Oh, it's right there.
We gotta reimburse them 60 days, we gotta.
Reallocation. Might need to be two pieces of legislation, one for financial and then one for the.
Do we have funds?
So, I would, you know, can I? Go ahead, go ahead. I was gonna say, I mean, we never spend out that deadline in total, ever, because of folks calling in sick, not showing up, and not having guards. I can't really, I mean, how many guards are we gonna ask for $85? Two or three? I mean, you're talking about $200, $50, do a whole budget allocation for $50. I don't think we gotta do that. I mean, I think you're gonna have money in that budget.
If it is, that's totally, I just didn't want to get down that road and find out and get, but however you want to proceed, it's perfect.
Curtis says we can do it, we're good.
Oh, really?
So, we need to pass two.
In my experience in work, so, for the part-time jobs, I was taking, when the money was in expenses, it required a budget allocation with a salary. However, when it was in salary, and then I used the county employees, and that was a expense line, did not require a budget allocation from salary to expense.
There you go.
Easy enough.
All right, so we have that covered.
All right. Next item on the agenda, the contract. Contract for uniform and accessories, connect to the fire department, Mr. Richard Ecker.
Evening, council members.
Evening.
Good to see you a few times tonight. Each year, or actually, not each year, but the last sub-leaders, fire department has enjoyed a contract with United Uniform Service out of Buffalo, and we once again put the specifications out, bid, and unfortunately, there was just one bid, and it was from United Uniform of Buffalo, the fire department uniforms. The fire department uniforms are a little bit different than police department uniforms, they go the extra mile to make sure they don't. So, there's a number of items in their uniform listing that may be somewhat unique to that situation, and United Uniform has done a good job supplying them the past three or four years, and they want to continue doing that. So, based on the fact that we did publicize it, sent it out to a number of companies on BidNet, also through the newspapers, and then one came forward with a bid, we recommend that we still continue our contract with United Fire Department. There's not a total amount there because this is on a per-item basis, that's how the bid was constructed, so we don't know, you know, obviously, they can't exceed what their budget allocation is in that line for uniforms.
Are they the same as previous years, or have the prices gone up? Or did you?
The prices have been adjusted modestly, it's not a wholesale 20% increase or anything like that, so modest on a couple of items here.
You have a question on this motion?
So, just out of the box here, this is not something that we would state bid by any chance, is it?
No.
I mean, to partner with Albany or Amsterdam, or to do a joint bid with all these other cities?
With the police department, we piggyback from Rensselaer County, their bid with Galls. We used to have Rudniks originally.
Yeah.
And then we had Rosen's uniform out of Albany. Rosen's has been purchased by Galls, because, you know, Linda doesn't really have a lot of, anymore, it's kind of moving away from that. So, when we look across the board at what's available, there aren't really a lot of opportunities at this point, you know, for other companies. It's kind of a shrinking thing. Most people do things on the internet now and buy it, and, you know, tailor it, whatever. So, this is kind of a custom deal.
So, we don't do a consortium with Albany, and is that something to even take a look at down the road, Rich? I mean, to?
We certainly could take a look at it. We do cooperative purchasing in a couple of other instances. For example, all of our copy-pape purchases come from BOSI's.
Right.
Also, that our requirements and BOSI's puts out bid, and all participants in that. The state does it for things like rock salt for roads and fuel, et cetera.
Right.
But there's no statewide bid on uniform because there's such a diversity between fire departments, police departments, volunteer departments, and different communities, it would be hard to have one standardized price.
All right, very good. Along that line of thinking, though, couldn't we just find a really big city that orders a lot and is piggyback on their uniforms, or do we have to have a certain type of uniform?
Well, again, the design of the fire department uniforms is quite specific, not like police department uniforms, and just speaking from my own experience, I know that we've been having a lot of issues with the larger companies like Galls, with getting product in timely way, billing issues, tremendous amount of billing issues, and the police department is currently looking at revamping how they're.
I meant like fire departments, like, I'm just making up. New York City, for example, let's say they have a nice uniform, why couldn't we piggyback on them, perhaps?
Perhaps we could, we'll have to look into that.
Any other question?
Yeah, because I'm an ally, kind of based on what Ms. Palomini said, but are we keeping the same look of our uniforms?
Yes.
So, it would need to be a municipality to have the same exact uniform as ours.
Right. I'm just thinking if we can, let's, I'm making up numbers, if we could save 10 grand, I know it's far-fetched, but if we could change our uniforms slightly to be in line with someone else's and buy the same thing, why not? As long as the firemen are okay.
I guess.
That's all I'm thinking. Yeah, right.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You're not going anywhere. Next item, the contract for the installation of emergency aftermarket equipment, the police department.
Yes. The police department has purchased 11 vehicles for use both in patrol and in the detective division, and most of these vehicles are of the SUV type, sport type, some are sedans, some are the SUV type, and there are also some palace sedans, detective. So, the outfitting of these was again advertised, bids came in on April 12th, and again, despite several companies looking at the bid and wanting to do, you know, a little piece here, a little piece there, we only had one company that came forward to say that they would do the entire package for us, and that's Niskun Tire and Service. That's the same company that did our last group of police cars. They have a fairly innovative process for doing this, and I don't know if you've seen any of the police cars that have been put on the road recently, but at night, you really cannot miss those cars while, they have lighting, scene lighting direct to the front of the cars, the sides of the cars, so they really upgraded the whole package, if you will, on these cars, and it's a very, very useful and efficient way that they do it. The total cost for the contract is $114,017, and it's about $11,000, between $10,000 and $1,000.
Andy, I just a comment, I'm very happy, Rich, that we're going locally. It's always good to see a local business involved, not necessarily in our city, but certainly in our county, and I really like to see our local small businesses being involved in the bidding process, and I know they've done good work in the past, and I drive by there because my daughter lives down the road there, and I see our cars there all the time, and good stuff, though, so.
I believe they're, are gonna open in the city.
Oh, is that right? No kidding, yeah, very nice, so very good.
So, just an observation, we have 28 companies download this specification, only one responded.
Right. We did have some companies that manufacture the equipment, they wanted to sell us the equipment, but again, because it's the entire package, we don't have our own facility personnel that can install, and the system that Niskun Tires put together really integrates everything together, so that we wouldn't want to be buying a siren over here, trying to integrate with a control panel over here, they do it all together, so it really is a much better situation.
If I remember correctly, the last time, or the time before that, when we went out to bid, we did have several companies bid, and Niskun Tire was the lowest bidder, correct? So, that's good to know.
Any other question, comment? Do you have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is discussion, repeal of the legalized fireworks, Ms. Karen.
So, thank you. Ms. Perazzo told me that we did this before, and I didn't know, so I was just in hopes that we could, we could put a resolution forward to the county, and I would like us not to be having legalized fireworks anymore in the county. I think there's, there seems to be some issues and problems when it comes around the Fourth of July in that timeframe when they, when they have the fireworks around, so I have heard from individuals within the city complaining that, you know, they don't stop at midnight, they go all night long, actually, I think this is your neighborhood has some issues.
Multiple.
Yeah.
I think it was all over the city.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Peter Barbour's picture papers, unbelievable, they look like jumping jacks.
So.
But they aren't having a public hearing.
I, yeah, so.
It sounds like they're gonna resend it, it sounds like.
Maybe, but.
My recommendation was that we resend the one that we passed in July with a letter that says, just reminding you that we still feel very strongly that, you know, this, you know, would just reaffirm once again, I mean, if the council as a whole wants to pass another resolution, but since we already passed one, but I thought we might remind them, right?
Can we just do another one, because Karen wasn't on the council that time? I don't believe you were, were you?
No, you weren't.
I mean, and I mean, you should have asked if you were. And it was, you know, it's a major issue, so if we could, I mean.
Can we, can we do, can we do the one, just revise the one that we passed?
Everyone has.
Just, you know, send it back to the county?
Yep.
And, you know, state our commitments, if we're against us. I mean, I know every one of us had our share or share a call during the, these firework time.
Yeah, I was actually planning on going into the public hearing, so I don't know anybody else you're gonna go to, so, all right, we can just.
Anybody there is, Mayor Forrest?
Let's do claims earlier.
Seven, seven P M.
Yeah, all right.
So, I will need a motion to...
Do a resolution.
Do a resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any other business for public safety? A motion for Karen?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, calls order health and recreation, and let me see, come up again, talk about the going up with petroleum, how to alright, for tomatoes.
Each year, we need liquid chlorine to keep the pools in standardary condition, and we once again went out to bid. And, if I may, I think some of the reason we're not seeing a lot of bids on some of these, people boil or recall and request bids from prior years, and I think they take a look and decide whether or not they can meet, beat the price from prior years.
Right.
And if they can't, they decide not to go through the process. So, here we have two companies that bid on our twenty-four thousand gallons of liquid chlorine, and the winning bid was submitted by Surpass Chemical of Albany, this is the same company that provided it last year. And, it was about a sixteen thousand dollar difference between their bid and the second other bid. So, pretty clear, this would be the one that the city would recommend, which is twenty thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
Does this increase over last price?
Just a slight increase.
About?
Again, this is a bid, so, we don't actually pay that much because it's based on our actual usage.
Okay.
So, it can be affected by how many days the pools are in operation, how much rain we get, how many contaminants are in the water, it has to be balanced with chlorine. I'm gonna guess we'll be within five or six percent of what we were last year.
Okay. Other questions?
I'll move it. Second.
Okay, moved by...
Got it, move.
Okay, and second by Mr. Louver, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, next ceremonial resolution, Union College Hockey Team, Ms. Luski, welcome.
So, there was a union hockey game back in February against RPI, and...
The Mayor's Cup.
The Mayor's Cup, and, Union won, so the club's coming back.
Yes.
Very exciting.
Yes.
So, I'd like to have a ceremonial resolution, both, you know, honoring them and the winning of the Mayor's Cup.
Question?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, ceremonial resolution for National Muslim Soup Kitchen Day.
Yes, well, once a year, all the various, they actually, they're all in the kitchen that they do a lot of cooking and feeding through, but they also will all open the community to cook and feed the meat, and it's really phenomenal day. So, I'm putting forth that the, last year, the mayor actually did a proclamation that checked his office that wasn't on the rotation for this year, and I thought it might be nice for a resolution instead, because then we could have them come in instead of just going out, so they could get some additional recognition, you know, rather than going to the site, so...
Any questions? Move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Earth Day, Mr. Louver?
Yep, a resolution to recognize this very importantly disconnected, very straightforward.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, this is a problem.
Okay, and ceremonial resolution for Arbor Day, Mr. Brady?
Betsy Henry promised she's gonna have people there to accept it this year.
Okay.
They, this helps them get funding, so it's important for them to have that, so they do a lot of good work.
Retreat. Retreat?
Retreat.
Okay, so, so for retreat to be able to get funding, they would...
Yeah, it helps them get funding, they have this ceremonial resolution, and she promised she'd have people there this time.
Okay, fair enough.
If she doesn't, we'll not plant any tree, no matter what.
Uh, and turn a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ground Park Cricket, Mr. Howard is not here, so Mr.... Mr. Felt sequel, I will pay. Okay, there's been a lot of discussion regarding Ground Park Cricket, as you know, in terms of background, we've had meetings, we've had the groups come together in an effort to, to just get the most maximum use of the field, whether it be in Central Park or wherever cricket's being played. It says Ground Park here, but there is some cricket being played in Central Park. So, the ultimate goal is to just like, have as many people, as many teams as possible to be able to play comfortably within the stadium. So, what we came up with is, there's really not much of a challenge within Ground, on Ground Park on a Saturday, because we only had actually one league, I have to get it right, league that wanted to use it on a Saturday. I think that there were some other, like, maybe want to use it for like, Guyana Day. But in terms of overall, there was just one league that came forth and said, I'd like to use it on Saturday. Sunday became more of a challenge because there were two leagues that came forward to say, you know, we would do like, I spoke to both leagues, and they have both agreed that they are willing to, well, there's grounds, let me just clarify, there's grounds in Central Park as well as there's grounds in Ground Park. And, both leagues like both grounds. So, but they did, we did come to a consensus where they were willing to be able to alternate use of the grounds, you know, in terms of playing. So, they, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that we would say to one league, you must only play in Ground Park all the time, all of your games. But, they would be able to play Ground Park as well as, as well as Central Park, and they would, they would be willing to alternate. So, that is the, that's what's before us at this point. We could probably talk more about how it looks in terms of pulling permits, et cetera and so on, if we want to, you know, have that discussion. I understand that there is some concern about the alternation between, for the two leagues, so, someone has concern about that?
I have a clarifying question. When you say they're alternating, does it mean that one league they wouldn't be able to play?
No, what it means is that, this week, they would play in Ground Park, and the next week, they would be in Central Park, and the one that was in Cent, was in Central Park would then be over Ground Park. So, it's, there's never going to be, there would never be a week where, saying you just can't play, no.
And both of those leagues are men and women?
Yes. This is how I know.
Which leagues are they?
Um, there's Kennedy Softball Cricket is one league.
And who's, who runs that?
Uh, that's run by Omkar Singh, and everyone is Premier.
And who runs that?
Uh, well, I'm not, I know that Law is part of it, but there's, what's the other gentleman's name that's...
Albert Morris.
Albert Morris is the one I think he's really actually in charge of that. Yes.
So, the Skeaty Softball Cricket, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that the group that we've had numerous problems with at the Mount Pleasant Fields? Where, is it Patty Smith, is that her name? Patricia Smith?
Yes, the Mount Pleasant President of Mount Pleasant.
Videos and showed us reports of problems, and I believe in one of our county legislators were there. And, there was no resolve to anything, and it went on for several weeks. And, also, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't this the same group that was kicked out of Central Park originally, years ago? I'm going back, what, maybe five or six years?
Two years.
It was two years? Because of loud music, problems, urinating? So, why are we going to accommodate this group to go alternate Central Park, where Central Park has been in very good shape, I think, for the last couple of years?
Well, well...
I just think that's unfair, completely unfair.
Well, the other group, first of all, has no, has no, is not, is okay with alternating, so it's not unfair to them, so I just want to put that right up there.
The Premier Cricket League is okay with it?
Yes, absolutely.
No, we did not.
Yes, that is what Law told me.
No, I said no.
That's not...
This I have to do, I, I said no.
Well, that is what, the information that you, when you talked to Junior, is what he said, that you'd said that, so...
Well, I told you, no, you wouldn't agree with that. So, I don't know where that comes from. I was sitting outside, and I said, maybe I said, no, you did not agree with that.
Well, that's not what the information was given to me, by the person that, you didn't call me directly. The information was sent to me by someone else, that you called, that had come call me.
Carol Scott, motion.
Yes.
Well, it was discussed with me and McCarthy briefly earlier today, and obviously, I don't know what a discussion you had, but my understanding of what was being discussed today by the council was just call for a public hearing, fill in the code, change the fee for cricket in the park, as well as some other fees to be set by resolution. Because there was a discussion internally about keeping the length of cricket game and the amount of space that they use, you know, making sure that the fee they get charged is first set out in the code, and it's fair compared to the other fees, and I believe what Jeremy Howard, David Frank, and some others had discussed was seventy-five dollars.
Well, I, David sent me this information today, and it's, it goes beyond what you're saying, and there is a question about opening, which was field assignment, so, and it also says that you're briefed on everything. So, apparently, we need to have all parties in the room?
Well, in terms of the field assignments, I'm speaking with Jeremy Howard today.
Where's Jeremy Howard incidentally? Not familiar about here?
I have no idea where Jeremy Howard is.
I, I mean, if he's supposed to be here, I mean, just let him be known, I mean, I'm very upset that he's not here, and I know the rest of the council members are, but I, I think we've had so many numerous meetings, and he hasn't been here for any of these. And, and I think as a department head or whatever his title is, he ought to be here.
I have to agree with that.
So, my case is done, so...
But what I can tell you in terms of where he's at with the schedule for cricket, he said that he's received complete applications for permits from two groups and not from a third. So, given that cricket season is starting soon, he is scheduled, you know, those two groups, he's got the full permit request from, you know, ones in one park, ones in another, the places that they requested, and when he gets, third one, if he gets it, they'll then work that in based on the availability that is left over. And, you know, there's a different procedure next year, that, you know, it'll be a different procedure followed next year, but that's kind of what is at this point this year.
Well, I think that we need definitely Mr. Howard to be here, because that is not how I understood this was... Yes.
Do we know which two groups have applied?
You're talking about a softball, cricket?
No, cricket, softball.
Which two leagues?
I don't know, I don't know off the top of my head. I know one of them was exclusively in Ground Park, another one was for Central Park.
So, that would be Capital District that was exclusively in Ground Park, right? Correct, Capital District, yes.
My concern is this, okay, so if we have a group that we've had some challenges, and right now, they're playing wherever they want, which is Mount Pleasant, why wouldn't we try to find them a, a space that the city could control, right? A space that the city, we talked about, safety deposits, security deposits, cleanup and all that. Why wouldn't we accommodate so that we can have more control, so it's not a quality of life issue for the neighborhood, so it's not, you know, on, right? It doesn't seem to be that it makes any sense to just ignore that group and let them continue on the way they've been continuing on, it makes more sense to accommodate them in some way.
They would be playing in Ground Park. That, that group...
Should be Ground Park.
And is not a neighborhood issue, right?
Right.
Well, it could be, if they, if they have to conduct themselves within the confine, and not, you know, conduct themselves, like last year, we had incidents at the Mount Pleasant Middle School ground.
And that's more of the...
It's a security deposit.
If I can just follow up on that, weren't we supposed to send an invoice out to reimburse the city for the cleanup costs?
That's gonna come under fees.
That's the next discussion.
You're talking about...
No, no.
Past tense?
Past, we were supposed to look into that.
Last year.
Because we had sent out a crew to clean up there, if Mr., yeah.
Yeah, that was Mount Pleasant.
Mount Pleasant Middle Field after disconnected the softball, had played a final there and...
Destroyed it.
Yeah, destroyed, yeah, exactly.
That's the word to use. And we saw the picture you're talking about, the last summer?
Yes.
Off the top of my head, I don't know anything about last summers, it's a choice.
Oh, okay, can you please?
That's partially school grounds though.
Right, part, belongs to the city, yeah.
The city cleaned it up though.
Ms. Luski, about to move this.
So, are we gonna move forward with our new pricing structure?
That's gonna be under fees.
With a public, okay, okay, all right.
So, can we clarify one more time? So, we're going at Ground Park, the Ground Park will be used on Saturdays by the Capital District.
Correct.
Sundays, we're gonna put Omkar's softball team there, on Sundays at Ground Park.
Correct.
The other group, uh, Mr. Law and Miss, and Morris have exclusive, they have exclusivity, Premier has exclusivity to Central Park on Saturday, or Sundays, on Sundays.
Well, I don't know exclusivity, but we talked about, you want to talk about pulling permits?
Yes.
Yeah, so they have to still pull permits?
Yes, yeah, 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 yes.
And all that. And if someone else pulls a permit prior to them being there, it's whoever gets it first as well.
No, no.
That's, that is what, that's what Jeremy said. So, we need Jeremy here.
Yes.
Because he said it's on first come, first served basis. So, we need Mr. Howard here to explain all of those things.
But in terms of...
Yes.
In terms of the team that has been in the past playing exclusively in Central Park, with no problem, what he said is that they have put in their permit application, and that is complete, and so they have been scheduled there for this upcoming season. So, any changes to this system is gonna be a next year thing, not a this year thing, based on that. And that any teams that come after and finish there, if I start this team tomorrow, and I put in a permit application, I'll be working on it, it's scheduled there by that team.
Well, again, it would be nice to hear it from Mr. Howard. Not that I'm saying you're not saying, what you're saying isn't correct, but, you know, he has all the details, he's been working on this, and he is on the agenda, so I'm not sure why he's not here. Yes.
I just want to add to that, I mean, Mr. Howard has done this many years to schedule these cricket leagues to play at various parks.
I don't doubt that.
And, you know, he has done a good job in the past, and I think he's gonna do a good job this year to schedule them and to provide necessary fields for them to play.
I'm not questioning his ability, I'm just saying...
And I think there are adequate fields available for both leagues to play, Central Park, Ground Park, for the softballs on Sundays, and the hardball on Saturdays.
Excuse me, but I just want to clarify, I'm not questioning his job, his ability of what he's doing, and what I'm saying is that he's not here tonight to explain that, so I just want to make sure that's clear, that's not misunderstood.
So, for the purpose of time, and I know these leagues are starting very soon, can I recommend, well, to possibly suspend this committee, or whatever we do, to hold it and convene it next Monday night at six fifteen, for the purpose of this discussion, to get the cricket park, get the, get them all, and have Jeremy Howard in this building?
But...
Because you gotta move on the scheduling.
The scheduling is set already though.
You think it is?
I know for sure.
But, you're not aware of that, right?
No, I am not aware of it. It would be nice to hear that.
Right.
Because that's the last conversation I had, so I would like to have Mr. Howard to tell me if he can do it just before the council meeting, just for, somewhere clear on that, because that's not the understanding I had. I beg your pardon?
I don't want him here, he's supposed to be here.
We're going to get to the teams as soon as we get to this.
Get him here, you know, I mean, I, I mean, how does that, we haven't done a suspended meeting in a while, or a committee, I mean, just to reconvene.
We need to move the power down.
Yeah, because they gotta play.
These leagues need to recess and...
Well, recess, we can convene on Monday.
All right, and Mr. Howard has got to be here.
Can I make a, are they playing this weekend, do we know?
Well, they would like to play, if the department is granted.
Well, even if we pass this today, they couldn't play this weekend because we have to wait till Monday to pass it, so...
Can't be passed till Monday night.
Right.
What are we passing? The fee structure you're talking about, or you're talking about...
No, that's, that's next, we're talking about who's gonna play where, and we would want, we'd talk to Mr. Howard, what the scheduling is, and at six fifteen, he can bring that here, present that to us, just so we're all clear. Because for me, there's a misunderstanding of the information that I was providing. Because for me, there's a mis, uh, there's a misunderstanding of the information that I was providing. Yes.
And just speaking to me administratively, because I spoke with him today, and there's no reason if they're scheduled to play this weekend that they can't. Even passing some new decision or some new rules with the council, just working under the, the old system with the rules and the mayor's inherent authority to manage the city. And they can set up a schedule. There are fees in place right now, so they can charge those fees. And if the fees change, then that gap changed. And if you did something on Monday and that changed the whole system, that would, going to effect, move forward. But there's nothing.
So they would pay the old fees? Is that what you're saying?
If they were to pay this weekend, yeah.
Is there someone scheduled this weekend?
That, I do not know.
You're saying yes, though, right? Are you guys saying you have, you have games scheduled this weekend? And does Capital, do we know if Capital has anything?
Right there.
Do you have anything scheduled?
From April twenty-ninth, but, yeah, April twenty-ninth. But, you know, we are kind of waiting on this. You all know how long it will be.
Yes, yes, yes.
And again, not talking about any of the booths. We've been, for Saturdays, been cleared for a while. We've, you know, if you guys don't mind, really request you to do it for Saturdays and then Sunday could be a separate issue, sorry. If you don't mind separating those two.
Okay, let me just clarify. Your first day is the twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth.
Okay. Uh, so our next meeting would be before that. So we would, we, we wouldn't have to separate them, is what I'm saying to you. Because we're clear, it's clear that you're the only person that wants to be there on Saturday, so that's clear. And our, our meeting to, um, to vote on that would be before your scheduled date. And as I understand it, there's no problems unless somebody else sees there a problem with that, so. We would need to separate that. I see that you're trying to distance yourself from that, but there's no need to do that.
But if allowed, I'm sorry, again, I'm not, I'm not quite my, my, but if allowed with the old structure, uh, old rate and everything, you're allowed to rent it for this weekend. Would love to do that and get playing game, even if it's a practice game before, yeah, those, you know, Saturday, six, nine.
Well, I would have to defer that to Mr. Um, Mr. Howard. You see, he's the one who does the scheduling. That's not really our role and responsibility. So that's, I would, I couldn't, we can't say that yes, we can, or you can't. That's really his job. So we can't say yes to that.
And that's something I will, this is more, we're doing here more of an administrative function. I think this should be, correct me if I'm wrong, more of administrative function, setting schedule or telling a league where they can play.
We're not doing that.
Making recommendation or proposal.
No, we're just, well, yes, we are doing that based on the conversation and the input that we got from them. We're recommending this to the city. It's not, we're not saying you must do this. But these are recommendations based on the conversation that has taken place. So yes, we can make recommendations. Okay, one last thing, because it's really not an interaction between us and the public during this meeting, though. Okay.
If I may, one last.
One last thing.
If Saturday is here, right, uh, does it still have to be the next Monday or can we coordinate a meeting with the correct, you know, people? This is insane. Can we have our, maybe our insurance or any other stuff that we require? Show us, I mean, you know, show him the documents that.
For the twenty-ninth? You're asking for that? Is it the day we're talking about?
Could be twenty-ninth, could be this Saturday. I mean, you know, just to make sure that we have the permit in hand and we kinda get this done, that process.
So let me say this. My understanding from what Mr. Palazzico was saying, now that you've said that, is that that was already all done and all documents were placed. But now, what I'm hearing from you then is that is not the case. That, your insurance and everything, he does not have all of that, so, um.
We do, I'm sorry.
But he does not. He did.
He should. I sent an email, right?
I think there's a little bit of confusion. He might not have been notified. It sounds, maybe this is how I see it. It sounds like they decided this like today or the last days and he hasn't been notified yet.
That would be a gap there.
Okay.
Check your email.
Again, is like, um, I still say that, but let's go with this till the six fifteen on Monday because there's a lot of questions and Mr. Howard has the answers. He is not here to answer. We're doing a lot of guessing. So, yes.
Can I just make one recommendation?
You certainly may.
We recommend that the permits be issued. Let them play this week and we at least get some rep.
Well, is that on Mr. Howard's schedule? Again, we don't know the answer to that.
Well, I'm sure we could find out this week.
So if he could schedule that, I don't have a problem with that.
A temporary permit until. The fee is the fee, the new structure is inactive.
So they can get in touch with Mr. Howard. We're making that administrative decision. They can use the, uh, Mr. Howard's. Excuse me, yes.
Is there any, I sent my schedule for Sunday, we can plan.
Okay, if you don't know Mr. Howard, I'm just gonna believe that he's taking care of that. I don't know cuz he's not here to answer that. So I'm just gonna believe that he's taking care of that. Uh, you'd have to call Mr. Howard about that. He's in charge today.
Please call Mr. Howard tomorrow.
Yes, you have to call him because I.
I don't wanna, if there's.
He hasn't submitted a schedule that we see, so I'm just gonna guess that and maybe so.
Yes.
I don't know. But you should call him.
Thank you.
So we need to.
We're gonna reset that during the meeting.
Okay. All right.
The other recommendation did not come from, it's not from the council, but, um, this is put forward based, uh, Mr. Frank has sent this, that they're suggesting that, um, for the new fee, that seventy-five dollars per game, which is basically like what the baseball, um, fees use right now. And, um, but it's a little bit more maybe because the games are longer than, the cricket games last a lot longer than the baseball games. And additionally, um, five hundred dollar deposit, uh, there was a recommendation, I think, a lot more than that, like two thousand.
Yeah, fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen hundred to two thousand.
But, um, their recommendation is a five hundred dollar deposit to, for cleanup if it's necessary.
Well, since, oh, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Palazzico.
Since the cleaning costs are more than five hundred dollar deposit, it should well cover that. So fifteen hundred to two thousand easily should, should be the security deposit. Cuz we were told that, if I remember well, the cleanup cost could run seven hundred, eight hundred dollars.
So each team would have to pay. So you're saying the league, the league, yes, would have to pay five hundred.
We'll take fifteen hundred.
So you're trying, you're suggesting that, I think, it's undue hardship actually, I think, to ask a team for two fifty hundred, each league to put that. And again, um, as we're, if we're going by what the cities.
That's what we discussed before.
Yes, but this is the city's recommendation. That was our discussion. The city's recommendation is five hundred.
So, so back onto my thing. It's an escrow, so that if there's no damage, no harm, they're going to get the money back.
Absolutely.
So I personally feel that I don't think it's an undue hardship if we were to ask them to escrow fifteen hundred dollars. That's two cleanups. And, you know, maybe they do, you know, seven fifty now and, you know, if they don't use it and maybe do seven fifty. If they do use it, they're doing another seven fifty mid-year, um, if it's a hardship. But it's money that they would get back. It would only be utilized if they didn't, um, leave the park as they received it.
So, okay, we said that we were gonna be looking at what the city is recommending, five hundred. I'm not sure why we want to make, yes.
And I, I think the reason is because it's, it's gonna cost more than five hundred dollars to clean up the park.
We're assuming that's gonna need to happen.
And, well, again, you know, if, if we're looking at the other softball league, um, you know, they've had several instances. But the other piece I wanna put into this, if we can, and I, I do support the fifteen hundred dollars, uh, and I think that should be paid upfront. Um, it's the seventy-five dollar piece when there's, I mean, that, they can work out. I think they do half upfront, uh, for the first half of the season, right? And then second half, they pay those other, those other seventy-five dollar pieces.
Cleanup costs will come up front.
But I think the cleanup cost, that escrow, as, as, uh, Ms. ZW has said, uh, should all be upfront. But again, we should be deducting that as the costs are incurred by us.
Right.
If they're incurred, if that, if that account zeros out, if that account zeros out, we pull their permits for the rest of the summer. They are not allowed to play on those fields for the remainder of the summer. Because part of that clause that they're signing is that they are supposed to take care of the fields, supposed to maintain the field, clean up the fields. I don't want us to be coming there every single Sunday or Monday to clean up the mess and saying, oh, we're just gonna take it out of this fifteen hundred dollar fund. I, I think there has to be some responsibility on the league's parts, uh, to clean up the fields to the best that they can. I mean, we're not gonna come there Monday. We have a couple bags or whatever, but I'm talking about if it's gonna be extensive cleanup cost. But again, and once that fifteen hundred dollars is, is used in its entirety, you lose the rights, exclusivity to that field for the remainder of that year. Um, and you're done. I mean, cuz if you can't, you assume those responsibilities to the league, then you know you don't belong in our parks. Uh, and I think that's just, it's a privilege to, to be in there and we certainly welcome the leagues. But I think it, it puts that little extra bonus on them. And I know where Dave came up with five hundred dollars. That, that doesn't cover, uh, anything from what I, I understand.
Well, okay, since he's recommending five hundred, we say fifteen, then can we meet in the middle at a thousand? I think that's reasonable because these leagues don't have a lot of money. And I think that, you know, it's not unreasonable to ask that. And let them pay five hundred upfront and five hundred next time.
Uh, well, my follow-up to that is, once they use that thousand, they're done.
If, but we, we're, we're assuming that they're going to leave our parks in a mess. We're assuming, and I think we should probably assume that they're not gonna do that. That's, I think we should try to assume in the positive that they're gonna take there, they're gonna clean up the park as, and it's gonna be as part of their contract. I think we should try to assume in that direction, not that the people that are using our parks are good, are just like, I don't wanna use the word slobs, but, you know, it, 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 we're, it sounds like we're making that assumption. So let's make the assumption that they're going to use the park effectively and clean up the parks. And this is not gonna be a major issue. Yes, Mr. Palazzico?
And the other piece I think we should think about including is if the police department are called and it's a founded complaint to have to pay for that response. And that Mount Pleasant situation last year was ridiculous. And we just want to put something as an incentive for good behavior. And if you misbehave, I mean, like Mr. Kozier said, yes, we can assume they're going to, but we also have to watch out for our expenses as the city as well. So, um, that should, I think, be incorporated.
We can't do that with the police. That's the police job. We can't incur an additional fee because the police are called. That's, that means they've, they're called to your house too many times. We'll, you know, charge the fee.
Could charge, correct, Carl?
One thing I just wanted, you can create the debate as long as you want, obviously, but what do we do? A call for a public hearing to change the code to create this fee anyway?
Right.
So you don't have to know the actual number today, oh, because it's not gonna, you're gonna pass, well, you fall through this way. Be setting the fees by resolution and then passing a resolution at the end of this process.
We'll call for a public hearing. Ms. Frazo, you had your hand up for a very long time, sorry.
Really? Yes, call for a public hearing, of course, just the same thing. Um, but my thing is, aren't we singling out cricket teams here?
Yes.
You know, like, to me, it seems like, okay, well, what if there's a, you know, what if there's a police call at a Union College baseball game? I mean, I, I just, I just find that, I, I, I don't know, it feels like shades of discrimination to me. And I just, I'm uncomfortable with that. If we're gonna put these, if we're gonna put these restrictions in place and it should go for everyone who uses our parks, you know, not just singling out one sport, I'm just uncomfortable with that.
Yes, Mr. Palazzico.
That was what the proposal is from, uh, the administration side, that this would be not just for cricket, but for softball leagues, for anyone who uses fields like that, you know, league format.
They'd have to all pay that.
Everybody's gonna have a, it's a resolution, not just for cricket, it's for everybody to use the parks. Any field, any.
Little League is exempt because they lease the fields from the city. So Little League's doing that page is fifteen hundred dollars.
Fee. Deposit. Money back.
That was not. Part would have to include everybody. It's not.
The one. The usage. That. That's it, it's. Action. Eight. For the send out, the clean. Whether.
Part would. And. Say that. Our citizens as.
Could be. Good.
Something that says. Something that says.
I'll say.
And Brad. We're looking at the. Uh. And I. You're gonna have. We collected. And. On. No, there was no sign on the door, there was no signage. And of course, the woman who was there, the city, uh, cuz she was frustrated as well.
So, I don't know.
What is the process?
Um, I guess we'd have to ask Mr. Frank to discuss that. It was made, um, but he would know that. And in terms of the fees and collecting, yeah, that's something that may be Mr. Howard could address.
How good are two?
Two weeks, all right?
Just a quick, and along those lines, don't they have that little, I don't know what you call it, shack or hut or whatever? That's people are supposed to like see who's playing and collecting. Don't they have that at the tennis court?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't use those tennis courts, so I don't know that they're using that.
So that's something we will.
Maybe a hut with no, is in it.
Did you have?
No, no, there's, there is a hut. I've never seen anyone in it.
Where are there?
I'm on seven hour.
If you further discussion on anything under House of Recognition. Okay, most.
Take the motion recess. Second.
Okay, we're recessed from Monday at six fifteen.
All right, moving right along here. Uh, I want you to call over the Committee on Intergovernmental Relations. We have one item here. Seeking support, uh, from, uh, congressional reps of the Oak Street Bridge, uh, Mr. Palazzico.
Obviously, the Oak Street Bridge has been a problem for many years now. Um, some of us are very, I think most of us are, all of us are very concerned about the issue. And, uh, let's see if we can use our congressional as well as senate leadership to put some pressure on Amtrak to finally get this approved and get going. So that's.
Maybe not on the tracks might be the right way to go. Best sort of policy for any updates on the Oak Street Bridge at this point in time? Any with terms of contract, where it is?
I don't have any updates.
Good question, yes.
Mr. Palazzico?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay, all right. So I do have an update. Um, I spoke with, um, Mr. Wallen regarding this, and, um, right now they're at the point where they have ten days, um, for Amtrak to respond. And they've been on track with, no pun intended. Um, they've been on track in terms of them. In terms of us sending in information, them responding. And so right now it's like ten days. And I think we're talking about May fifth in terms of them needing to respond. So we're moving right along. Um, let me also say that, um, Senator Schumer was in town this past Tuesday for, for something else, but I had an opportunity to speak with him, especially after Mr. Benowon came to the meeting on Monday and he just, you know, to express his concern and we were going on four years. And I, you know, explained what our situation was, where we were with this, and that we had been moving along. Um, and just that if there was anything that his office could do. And he said, if, you know, if it comes to that and we need that, you certainly could reach out. But in speaking with Mr. Wallen, we, he feels like we really got to a place where we're, we're really moving ahead. It's, it's taken a while. And in the long, there was a long eighteen month period where we didn't have anything. And, but we're moving along and now we're talking about May fifth, so.
So the ten day window is starting?
It's going to end. Um, well, they have ten more days, I should say that.
Oh, ten more days, okay.
Yeah, so May fifth is the date that he gave me. Let me just say that. That's the date that's in my head. Um, and so he feels like they really have, you know, are moving along on this after the, there was a lockdown for a while, but it's, seems to be, um.
The way I'm saying that is just a little more than ten days.
Um, well, May fifth is the day, maybe the number of days, how many, but if May fifth was the date.
We have someone from the interior here. I don't know if, I don't need to put you on the spot, but I don't know if you have me.
No. What I, I'm not integrally aware of everything for the Oak Street Bridge, but first it informed me that we have sent them their eighty percent plans that are eighty percent complete. We are waiting on their final comments back and then we should be able to send out, uh, final plans. And, uh, so we are in the process, like you said, uh, I believe May fifth does sound about right for when you're supposed to have the comments back.
that are, so make those changes that they recommend.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you behind me.
That's all right.
You had your hand up?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Wallen kind of gave us the whole timeline and all of the steps, because I think it was 60%, 80%, and then, like, so it's moving, I mean, I don't have any opposition to.
Yeah.
But we are, we are moving in a forward direction.
I agree.
And I just want to have.
I want to have a conversation with him, because I didn't want to talk to Senator Schumer and not talk to Mr. Wallen about that, you know, and make him aware, this is his department. And he's, he's, he's.
So we want to hold this for a couple weeks, just see what that May 5th deadline is, or do you want to just go ahead and do a letter?
They're moving along so slowly.
Well, it's not, well, in my personal opinion, and it's just my personal opinion, it's not going to make any difference. The system is the system is the system. However, it doesn't harm anything for us to pass a resolution saying, come on, help us here.
Personally, I think we move ahead and put something forward. It worked, some of us talked to representatives before, it worked.
Pushed a little bit.
It pushed a little bit, let's push some more and see what happens.
We had it ready last year, I think, we pulled it off because Amtrak got a whole bust, they saw it on the agenda, if I remember right.
I put it on the agenda, and the Amtrak was like, wait.
Yeah, they were suffering, they found it, yeah. So maybe putting it on there, maybe they'll see it again.
The gentleman was, I thought was going to implode at the L B meeting. I don't know if you were there or not.
All right, so let's continue to move on it then, all right? So we'll do a resolution, put something forward, and if we could just stand up and just make that announcement too about the timeline. So folks out there kind of aware of it as well, maybe check with Chris or whatever, or Portiffel, one of you guys speak on it. All right, just so we can make sure we let folks know they were moving slowly. Moved by Ms. Brazzo, second by whoever else is on this.
Me.
Ms. ZW, all in favor, say aye. Anything else to come before intergovernmental relations? Motion to adjourn, Karen, ZW, and Ms. Brazzo, seconds, all in favor, say aye.
I want to stay.
All right, God bless you. Aye, aye, we're moving along, here we go, who's up?
All right, Public Service Utilities, and first, Mr. Wallen. You have the floor.
Thank you. So, as you've seen in the attached.
You want a pay raise, is what you're saying, you're sending here all this time.
I mean, if it's given, it's given. Can't say no for that. But we, as you've seen in the attached, we did get an email from Senator Disco, authorizing or sending out preliminary numbers for the 2017 CHICS numbers. It also includes a wear recovery and also additional money for A New York, which are two other funding sources that have been added for our paving program. Do you guys have any questions?
Question, anyone?
It's going to be moved by Mr. Riggi, second, second by Ms. Portiffel, all those in favor? Aye. Thank you so much.
That was easy. I got two more, it's all right. You do?
Um, yeah, he's on the Saferoots, Central Park Trail. I closed, you're opening. Any other business, make a motion to adjourn. Thank you. I did that already.
Yeah, we'll rewind the tape, but Committee on City Development and Planning, a couple of items here, we have a ceremonial resolution. Ms. Portiffel.
Yes, very Amy Zion Church, it's, and there's a correction to the agenda, it's the 180.
Yes.
Wow. I was going to say, 108 was an odd number.
180.
You really were.
The cross school is only 20 years old.
And so they'll be celebrating that on May 5th. And so I just would like to give them a ceremonial resolution to observe the anniversary of their church.
Are we going to do that at the dinner, there's a dinner or reception or something?
Right, there is, actually, they actually left one for each of you.
Oh, very good. So are we going to hand it there, or are they coming to the council meeting?
I will let that, I'll help them let them make that decision whether, okay, those are.
I was going to say, who are these people?
That's what you return, responsible.
Oh.
Just take one, that's the return envelope, they see their saving money.
Oh, here we go.
So.
I'll move it. Very good, okay, so we're going to do it at the ceremony.
I'm going to ask for the company city council, if they would like.
Very nice, all right.
You move it.
Uh, Mr. Mulchver, Ms. Portiffel, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You, and we have a couple items here, come on up. Again, we have Safe Schools Route and then the Central Park Bike Trail.
So the first one here is for the safer schools, it's just a resolution to notify the city as the lead agency to all see for a paperwork. We are not doing any excavations or anything like that, we're just putting in curbs and sidewalks, there's no, you need your disturbances, so this is actually just a basically paperwork to say that there is no, I guess.
Very good. Any questions or concerns on this?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You, Central Park, get in the bike trail.
It's basically the same thing, we're going to just also reclaim the city of the lead agency for that trailer project, again, just putting in curbs and sidewalks. This one also had an archaeological study done, first time we looked at this a couple years ago. And again, there was no, nothing found, so this is all, we've seen environmental stuff, it's just lead agency.
Any questions, concerns?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I think everything else is going to be in executive session, correct? Yes. All right, so we need a motion to go in executive session.
So move.
Where, second, all in favor, say aye. Five-minute recess, come on back at five minutes. Rachel's been waiting. Rachel, oh my god. I do get stuck, man, I do get stuck with her.